Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here today. I see that we have some special guests for our meeting today. This is a City of Eagle Pass regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. It is 5:35 PM. We will begin with the establishment of quorum. We do have a quorum today with Mayor Protem Davis, Councilman Garcia, Councilwoman Ramon, myself, Mayor Salinas, and as of right now, we're just missing Mr. Diaz. Moving on to a moment of reverence. As always, we like to take a moment to pay respects to our military, people that are serving right now here and abroad. If we could take a moment of reverence. Thank you very much. Now we have a citizens communications and recognitions. We will start with the recognitions. We have two very special recognitions, and for this, I would like to invite council to please join me here up front to present these two. We are celebrating this week a very special group from the City of Eagle Pass, our code enforcement officers. If we could please have our code enforcement officers join us up here, we would greatly appreciate it. This is a very special presentation for us because we want to recognize this fine group of men and women that always take care of the community, always make sure that we have a safe, a clean City of Eagle Pass. So on behalf of a city council, we would like to present a proclamation that reads as follows. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of buildings zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers are often not credited for the jobs that they do in saving lives and improving neighborhoods. And whereas every day assisted by support and program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times their efforts go unnoticed even after code compliance has accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their job seriously and are proud of their department and the local government within which they serve. And whereas the City of Eagle Pass wishes to recognize the value and the accomplishments of code enforcement officers. So now therefore I, Rolando Salinas, Mayor of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of June 2nd through the 6th, 2025 as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week in the City of Eagle Pass, and I urge my fellow citizens to join me in expressing our great appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. And witness here, I do hereby sign this third day of June, 2025. Thank you all so much for our work. This is a very hard job that they do for the City of Eagle Pass. A lot of times, I know that they go to homes and people are not happy when they see you. But they're there so that the city can look beautiful, so that the city can be safe. So we're very, very grateful for the work that they do. Thank you. Well, next, we want to recognize a very good group from the City of Eagle Pass, which is Texas Prime 830 12U volleyball team. We want to invite you all, if you could join us right here. I think I can, I can speak for council when I say that this is one of our favorite things to do, is to recognize the young people of the City of Eagle Pass. We're very proud of everything that you've accomplished, and we want to thank you all, your parents, your coaches, for being there for you and making sure you succeed at every level. So we do want to recognize this team. It's made up of 13, 13 young athletes from Eagle Pass, and they competed in the Lone Star Regional Volleyball Championships in the 12U Division, representing Texas Prime 830. The team placed third overall out of 48 teams, which was an exceptional accomplishment at a highly competitive tournament. These young athletes have brought statewide recognition to Eagle Pass, showcasing their strength, discipline, and the potential of our youth. And on behalf of city council, we want to present you all with the Award of Excellence presented to the Texas Prime 12U Division in appreciation for your outstanding achievements representing the City of Eagle Pass at the Lone Star Regional Volleyball Championships. Congratulations. Coach, you want to say some words?
I'd just like to say thank you to the parents because without this, this opportunity wouldn't have been able to be possible. And these girls worked really hard, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm excited to see what's, you know, what they're going to do in the future. So again, I'd like to give a round of applause to the girls.
The parents can join us up here if you want. Congratulations. Keep it up, keep it up. We do have a citizen communication, Mr. Alfredo Aréllia.
How you doing? Sorry, let me take my cap off. Mayor, council, good afternoon. Thank you for hearing us out. The road to Williamsport starts this two weeks from now. As you know, Eagle Pass Little League has been a staple in our community for years. I'm the president for this year. I do have one other board member that joined me today. We have the tournament, the 12U tournament, which is the group that earns the right to go to Williamsport. Of course, they have district, sectionals, region, state, and then region. Back in 2010, a team from Eagle Pass got to be on ESPN, and that's what everybody in our community is looking forward to. This year, we started our league with zero money in our bank account, and there's a lot of expenses that come about withdrawing a tournament. We have two other, two other teams that are going to be playing out of town. We are having six teams from around the area. You've got Crystal City, Del Rio, Kenny County, and of course Eagle Pass that are playing in this tournament, starting on June 16th through the 22nd. We're looking to see if maybe the council can look at the room tax committee and maybe help us out with some funds to be able to allocate the expenses that we have. There are about $6,500 worth of expenses to just have this one tournament come in into town. Of course, we have teams coming from out of town, and they're going to be eating at our restaurants, staying at our facilities, and enjoying every amenity that we have here in the beautiful City of Eagle Pass. So there's some information that I will leave with the secretary, and again, everything starts with the youth, as you saw right here, the youth of Eagle Pass, and what every summer they embark on this, this journey of 11 and 12-year-olds trying to get to where everybody wants to go, Williamsport, Pennsylvania, to be on TV and to play for Little League World Series. Thank you for listening, and I hope that that we can have some assistance from the City of Eagle Pass. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aréllia. At this time, we're going to move to item number two, which is canvassing of the general election held on Saturday, May 3rd, 2025, for the mayor's petition. As you all know, this is, this is in regards to the recount petition submitted by Mr. Jesús Casas. The recount was conducted on May 19, 2025, in accordance with state law, and the results are as follows. For the, for mayor, Monica J. Cruz, 1,767 votes. For Jesús Casas, 893. For Aaron Valdez, 1,862. The amount of overvotes was nine, and the amount of undervotes was 13. So that is a canvassies. We don't, we don't need action on that, right? It's just this, okay. The second item is consideration and possible approval of a resolution accepting the canvas of the above stated election. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve this canvassing by Councilman Garcia. Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Council, at this time, I would ask if we could please move to item number 18, which is Texas Water Development Board Loans Reimbursement Update. We do have Ms. Jorge here.
Sir, I think that that one's going to be presented by our finance team. I think the one for Mr. Barrera is the appointment of the
Did I make a mistake?
Yeah, it's 22?
Oh, just 22?
Yes, so if you want to
Okay.
We'll do that one.
That's right. Actually, yes, 22. Confirmation of appointment of Dr. Hector Alvarez as a board member for the Eagle Pass Water Works System. Just, Mr. Alvarez was approved by, by the board at Eagle Pass Water Works to serve as a new board member, now that Mr. Mr. Ruiz, yes, he's termed out. I believe he served already eight years, and the board did approve Mr. Alvarez, but city council has the final say on those members. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve Dr. Alvarez by Mayor Protem Davis? Second by Councilman Diaz. All in favor? Unanimous. Item number four, Public Hearing on the Request Submitted by Crane Engineering Corporation for the Rezoning of a 6.69 acres more or less being out of the same certain tract described in conveyance document to Desarrollos y Proyectos del Águila LLC, recorded in volume 1830, page 416 of the Maverick County Official Public Records, Maverick County, Texas, also known as a proposed MGA subdivision phase two from R1 First One Family Dwelling District to R2 Second One Family Dwelling District. Closing of public hearing and possible action. This public hearing is open at 5:51 PM. Mr. Madara?
Mayor, council, good evening. This item is fairly straightforward. They're looking for a rezone from R1 to R2. They're both single-family residential zoning districts. They just have a little bit of different zoning requirements, the intensity of use. So it's primarily the, the rear setback is what the, the main change between these two is, and they're seeking to go for, for this rezone from R1 to R2. As you read, Crane Engineering Corpus de Applicant, on behalf of the owner, Desarrollos y Proyectos del Águila LLC, is part of the MGA subdivision. This is phase two, which consists of 24 residential lots and one open space undeveloped, unbuildable lot. It's a 6.69 acre tract. Here's a view of the plat. As you could see to your right is the existing residential areas such as on Buena Vista Drive, Paso del Rio. And the phase one that's under development currently also is zoned R2. Also, a lot of the, just to the north of this, a lot of the Rio Grande Estates and Bass subdivision, those were all also developed as R2. So R2 is the more, most common single-family zoning district that's being developed these days. R1, which is to the right, the original version of, of the Paso del Rio and Buena Vista, has not been used as often, that zoning district in the last five to 10 years. Here's a view of the zoning map to the right of the screen. As you can see, a lot of the light yellowish color, that's the R1 zoning, and then above it is the R2, that darker orange type of color. And again, that, that is the more common zoning type for residential development these days. So one notice was sent out to abiding property owners, one letter was received in favor. The department and the PNZ Commission's recommendation to council is to grant the request and approve the change from R1 First One Family Dwelling District to R2 Second One Family Dwelling District for the MGA Phase Two. Any questions on the item?
No questions for me. Council? Is it all, Mr.?
That's it.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll ask if there's anyone in the public that has any comment on this item. If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 5:54 PM, and I'll entertain a motion on this item. I think the, your recommendation was to approve the change, Greg?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to, to approve by Mayor Protem Davis?
Second.
Second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous, I'm assuming? Okay. Moving on to item five, Public Hearing on the Variance Request Submitted by Cavell Engineering for the Proposed Final Replat of Lot 2 and Block 3 of El Pueblo Nuevo subdivision, also known as 165 Mari Drive. The applicant seeks variances from the City of Eagle Pass Code of Ordinances as follows. One, a sidewalk waiver from Section 23-64 regulating sidewalks. Two, a subdivision variance from Section 23-69 B2B regulating lot size requirements for the R2 Second One Family Dwelling District to reduce the average width of 55 feet to 50 feet. And three, a subdivision variance from Section 23-36A regulating preliminary plat requirements. Closing of public hearing and possible action. The time to open this public hearing is 5:55 PM.
Mayor, thank you. So the, as you mentioned, the applicant, Cavell Engineering, we do have a representative, Mr. Carlos Velarde, engineer is represented, representing the property owner, Francisco Valones Jr. Again, this is 165 Mari Drive, and this is outside city limits, property in Pueblo Nuevo, El Pueblo, El Pueblo Nuevo subdivision, where they're seeking to make two lots out of one. The parcel size is .344 acres. There currently resides, or currently exists as one single-family residence. The proposed replat would still leave properties that would essentially be equivalent to an R2 type of zoning. The, the area is developed and does have other residential properties in the vicinity. This is off Angie Drive and Mari Drive, and as you could see, the black square there is being split. So before, it was one property, one lot, and now it's turned into Lot 2A and Lot 2B. The main reason why these type of applications come in is so that they can get separate utilities. Typically, Water Works, AEP, et cetera, only grants one meter per lot. So a lot of times, they'll come do this process, then they can have two separate meters, two different builders, maybe sell it, or have a different family owner develop on the other one. Here's a couple of street views. As you can see, there is a curb and gutter. That's one of the key factors that we, we use in determining sidewalk waiver requests. When there is curb and gutter, we typically deny those and ask that they build sidewalk in front of the property to be replatted. 75 notices were mailed out to abiding property owners. None were received in favor and opposition, and five came back as undeliverable. Our initial recommendation to the PNZ Commission was to deny the sidewalk waiver request as it does not meet the criteria, and as I mentioned, there is curb and gutter, and to grant the subdivision variance regulating size requirements, reducing the average width to 55, from 55 to 50, and grant the variance to proceed directly to final replat without having first obtained preliminary replat. After discussion with PNZ and some comments from the engineer, he proposed that there be a condition that the sidewalk be installed when that second lot is developed. We agreed with that. It makes sense. That way, essentially, if, if we didn't do that, they would have to build all that sidewalk now, and whenever somebody wants to build that undeveloped new lot, they'd probably have to break all that up, go ahead in there, build a house, and then redo it after they build the driveway, once they determine that. So this way, it allows it just to be done once.
Right.
Think that's more efficient and was a reasonable request. So the PNZ Commission approved this, but with their request to, for that sidewalk to not be installed until the development of Lot 2B. So ultimately, the recommendation is still to approve, as we stated. They would do the sidewalk when 2B is developed. They get the variance from the average width of the frontage and go directly to final plat. And so our recommendation is to approve that way as well.
Okay. We have a recommendation by the Community Development Department. Do we have anyone in the public that has any comments? Mr. Carlos, how are you, sir?
Hello. Good evening, city council. My name is Carlos Velarde. I'm the project engineer for this project. Just want to thank you for the consideration on this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any questions, concerns from council?
I just have one question regarding compliance with the conditional approvals that we give. How do, how do we follow up on that? Or is anybody following up on that? Because I know that we grant a lot of variances with conditions.
Yeah, that's a good point. So if they're inside the city limits, we have the oversight when they come for that permit. This being outside the city limits, we rely on the county permitting staff. And I think from everything I've heard in recent years, they're pretty much just as, as interested in sidewalks as we are these days, so they, they are asking for that at the time permits go to them. So this, this one being outside of city limits, we only have jurisdiction for this plating process, not for the construction. But that is a good point. At this point, we would be relying on the county to enforce that.
How do they find out that we approved the variance with conditions?
So they, well, they, we, they're included with the correspondence and the review team when we send out these type of applications, but ultimately, it's really going to come when they get the permit to build on that lot. They, they're already asking for it anyway, so it's, basically, they would be doing this either way.
Got you. Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay. We'll close the public hearing at 6:00 PM, and I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended by the committee of the chairman.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Davis? Second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Moving on to item six, Public Hearing on the Variance Request Submitted by Cavell Engineering for the Proposed Final Replat of Lot 8 in Caraville subdivision, also known as 71 Cari Drive. The applicant seeks variances from the City of Eagle Pass Code of Ordinances as follows. One, a sidewalk waiver from Section 23-64 regulating sidewalks, curb and gutter. And two, a subdivision variance from Section 23-36A regulating preliminary plat requirements. Closing of public hearing and possible action. This public hearing is open at 6:01 PM.
Thank you, Mayor. So similar item, also represented by Mr. Carlos Velarde, Cavell Engineering. This property owner is Jair Castillo, 71 Cary Road. The parcel size is .44 acres, also seeking to create two lots out of one. The, the surrounding area does have residential land uses consistent with City of Eagle Pass residential lots. There is utilities to this property, and as you could see here towards the bottom of the screen, they're creating a lot at that top, which would be Lot 8B, and there's already an existing structure, Lot 8A. Here's a couple of aerial views and street views. As you could see difference on this one, there is not curb and gutter on this street or in the vicinity. There were 31 notices mailed out, five letters received in favor, four letters received as undeliverable. One other person came by the office asking what the letter was they received. We explained, and they said, okay, we, we don't have any problem with them doing that. So the recommendation by the department and, and the PNZ Commission to council is to grant the sidewalk waiver, again, as there is no curb and gutter in the area, and two, to grant the subdivision variance to proceed directly to final replat. Any questions on the item?
None for me. Council? Anyone from the public? Any comments? If there are none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:03 PM, and I will entertain a motion on this item.
So moved, I guess?
We heard the
You're welcome to chime in, but I'll make a motion to approve as recommended.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem Davis makes a motion. I'll second. Second, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Moving on to number seven, Public Hearing on the Variance Request Submitted by Cavell Engineering for the Proposed Final Replat of Lot 258 in Loma Bonita Unit 3, also known as 846 Calle Frente. The applicant seeks variances from the City of Eagle Pass Code of Ordinances as follows. One, a sidewalk waiver from Section 23-64 regulating sidewalks. Two, a subdivision variance from Section 23-69 B2B regulating lot size requirements for the R2 Second One Family Dwelling District to reduce the minimum area of 50, 5,500 square feet to 5,000 square feet. And three, a subdivision variance from Section 23-69 B2B regulating lot, lot size requirements for the R2 Second One one-family dwelling district to reduce the average width of 55 to 50 feet. And four, a subdivision variance from Section 23-36A regulating preliminary plat requirements, closing of public hearing and possible action. We will open this public hearing at 6:05 PM.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Velarde is a busy man. So another one, Cavell Engineering is represented for the property owner Antonio Flores Gutierrez and Maria P. Flores. This is for located, a lot located 846 Calle Frente. Again, seeking to take one lot and separate it into two lots. This has a parcel size of .2296 acres. And the new lots would be pretty consistent with the R2 city zoning. There's residential uses already in the vicinity here, and there's utilities in the surrounding area here. So this one, these are long lots that had dual frontage to Calle Barbara and Calle Frente. In this case, they're splitting it down the middle. So then there'll be one that will have a Calle Barbara front and the other one, Calle Frente. As you could see there on the pictures on the right, this is an undeveloped lot. There's no structures yet. So both of these will need to go through the county for permitting to construct. Just a couple other pictures. There is curb and gutter in this area. Seventy-seven notices were mailed to abutting property owners. None were received in favor and opposition, and five were received as undeliverable. Similar to the first one, we, our original recommendation was to deny the sidewalk waiver request as there are curb and gutter. But similar to the first one, after talking to PNZ, they made their request, Mr. Velarde, and we agreed it was reasonable that the sidewalks could be installed at the time of lot development of each of those two lots. Again, same as what we discussed on the two items previous to this. So the recommendation is to grant the sidewalk waiver with the condition that the sidewalks be installed at time of lot development for each of those two lots. Grant the subdivision variance regulating lot size requirements to reduce the minimum area 5,000 square feet. Grant the subdivision variance regulating lot size to reduce the average width to 50 feet. And grant the subdivision variance to go directly to final replat without having first obtained preliminary replat. That concludes your presentation. Any questions?
Any questions from council or comments?
They're cutting the, like, the long one in half, right? So that's why they're not, they're not really changing, like, the lot width.
Right, but it was already a-
It was already like that?
Yes.
I mean, because that's just my, that was my concern, and I was trying to focus on that on the one, even though I made the motion earlier. I just want to make sure that, like, I mean, I mean, it's already that width, but that we're not narrowing it because I don't want it to become, not that you're going to encroach on your neighbor, but that we're putting anyone at risk for, you know, issues with fire where they're so close by that, you know, they can easily catch fire, you know? It's just like, I know we've had that issue with some other constructions, and even within the city limits that, on some of the older lots, where they want to do that. And then it comes back, and the structures are going to be too close together that it's very easy to spread fire. I mean, that's just my concern. It's always going to be safety, so.
Yeah, fire safety is a top priority. 50 feet is a pretty common width. A lot of the older parts of town, 50 feet is their normal width. And they still do need to do their five-feet side yard.
Just making sure-
And then their neighbor would have five. So it would have the 10-feet minimum that Fire Marshal looks for there. So that is a very important point to bring up, but we do feel it can still be attainable with a 50-foot lot width.
Good point. I just wanted to make sure, because I was, as I was looking at this on the one next door, the Lot 257A, I just want to make sure that the buildings are not too close that, you know, that they're going to be, you know, putting themselves in harm's way because sometimes people tend to overlook that.
Yeah, that's a good point. I do know the county is also enforcing building code. So they're also looking for those minimum setbacks that are part of that. But, yeah, that is a good point. Did that address your concern, or do you have more questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from council or the public? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 6:09 PM, and I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Davis.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. The next items we have on the consent agenda, it's Items 8 through 16. At this time, I'll ask council, if there's any item that anyone wants to pull so we can discuss it individually, please do so now. If there isn't, I'll ask for a motion to approve Items 8 through 16.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Garcia.
Second. I'm good. You want to go?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. We'll go ahead and move to Item 17, Quarterly Investment Report. Mr. Castillo.
Mayor and City Council, good evening.
Good sir.
These reports is the result of the finding audits that we had the last time the auditors came in and did the audit. So there were two of them, and now we are tackling down. City Administration, Mr. Omero Valderas and Mr. Ivan Morua. And the Finance Department have worked together to comply with those finding audits and make sure that we are solving them before the end of the audit of the fiscal year 2324. So the first one was the non-compliance portion of the Public Funds Investment Act. And that was something that we didn't do in fiscal year 2223. We were also not doing it in 2324. So for fiscal year 25, 2425, we hire a consultant for one year to help us come into compliance and make sure that we submit the reports to you as you need them. So on the folder that you have in front of you, you're going to see this page in green. This is a summary of all the reports. I am attaching to your agenda a report for March 31, 2025, which is the most current report. But we are also giving to the City Secretary the reports for all the fiscal year 2324 plus the quarter of December 23, 24, I mean, 24. And we're giving the first quarter of March 31, 2025 to you as well. So basically, what it reads, if you look at the first column on the top for fiscal year 2324, we have deposited in the bank $24 million, 24.6. And at the tax pool, we had $26 million. So if you look at the interest rate, it was 2.92 and for the banks, and also 5.37 for the tax pool. The interest earned for that period, the first quarter, was $357,000. So if you continue reading to the right, you're going to see the same numbers and reflecting whether the increase or decrease on the monies in the bank. So the difference is whether we use the money on that particular quarter. So then it's going to decrease in the back. And in the tax pool, it was pretty much stable. We're not using it. But when you get to the quarter of March, or December 31, 2024, on the bottom of that page, you're going to see that at the bank at that time, we had $20.6 million. And then at the pools, we had $23 million. So what that means is we took money out to pay for the CIP projects that we were using. Now, I'm going to take you back to the fourth quarter ending of September 30, 2024. If you look at the right, so the total interest earned for that year, it was $1.4 million. So that was a good year.
Yep.
And then if you look on the bottom, as of December 2024, we are $274,000 in interest earned. And then as of March 31, we got $522,000, almost $523, interest earned. Again, if you have more questions, we can definitely sit down with you. You have only one report in your agenda, but City Sec has all the reports. If you have any questions, you want to see the more detail. Any questions?
None from me. Thank you for the detailed report. Definitely appreciate that.
And if I can just add, Mayor and council is obviously, this is, as Mr. Castillo mentioned, this is us trying to make sure that we correct the findings and make sure that we are being responsible when it comes to the investments that the city decides to make. What we're trying to do is we're trying to make the most of the money that we have to make us more money to be able to bring projects and improvements to the City of Eagle Pass. So Mr. Felix, you know, I credit him for, you know, taking the initiative to make sure that we began getting this fixed sooner rather than later and ensure that we don't, we're not in the same position again in the future.
I'd like to see that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you. So the second report has to do with another finding that has to do with the Water Works loans-
I think they have, they have to jump, close the item and move to the other one.
Okay. That's, we're done with 17?
Yes, we are.
Okay. We'll move with 18. Texas Water Development Board Loans Reimbursement Updates. Now we can jump into-
Okay. I just got too excited. All right. So this was a big finding last year, fiscal year 2223. The report that you have in your hands, I need to tell you that the fact that we were having issues on our side, it was a combination of Finance Department not requesting the monies from Texas Water Development Board and with us working in conjunction with the Water Works Department and also the engineers. So there was some kind of mishap or miscommunication, and that's why we ended up in the problems that we had in 2223. So I'm going to call to your attention to fiscal year 2021. It's almost in the middle of the page that you have in your report.
Yes, sir.
If you notice, there is a $7.5 million deficit. So what that means is that we were paying all of these contractors doing the work for the Water Works, but we were not collecting the money from the Texas Water Development Board. So we were using city monies to pay for this, and that's why we had a huge deficit. This was the finding in the audit where we were not going after this money. We were not reconciling these monies or these accounts. And that's why we had this big deficit. So what that happens is we basically financing the project. So we were doing that at that time for the Water Works Department. Now, it's not their fault. I mean, they had nothing to do with this. It was all on our side. But this is the report that I'm giving you. Now, since I came in in August 24, August 14, 2024, Mr. Homer and Mr. Morua gave me this assignment. They're always very persistent. How are we doing with that? We need to recover this money. So I am happy to announce to you, if you look at the deposits on the bottom that I'm showing there for the bank deposits, if you see, the first deposit that we got was in October 23, 2024. And on the very bottom, you see the total amounts that we were able to recover since the time I came in on board. It's $5.3 million that we got. I mean, again, Mr. Morua, Mr. Homer, were almost whispering on my ear every day, how are we doing, how are we doing? So I appreciate the persistence. I appreciate the support as well. But I can tell you that right now, we're in a very good spot. The only money that we need to recover is $2.8 million. I know it's a lot of money, but we're going to get it. You know, we're still working on it. We're going to try to get it as soon as possible. It's going to take a lot of digging, a lot of research, but we're going to get the money back.
That $5.316 million, we got it back? And what can the city, what does the city use that for? Where does that money go?
What this money is, so this money was utilized from the general fund because that's how we were financing all of these projects. So the money, as it was coming in, it was going back to the general fund. And we're utilizing it to pay everything that we need to pay on a daily basis, payroll and operational expenses. So the last money that we got, it was $3.1 million in, what is it, last week? Or two weeks ago? And this is the money that we were waiting for. I mean, we're having our fingers crossed because we needed this money. Our general fund is always suffering. Almost every pay period, we are struggling because we didn't have this money. But from this point forward, we should be okay.
And part of also, what we want to do is, obviously, recovering these funds back into the general fund gives us an opportunity to invest it and let it make us some more money within the interest-bearing account. So we're lucky that we're able to recover it. And I know the consultant that we have will be analyzing on where we can invest it to continue to make the city more money. So we're just glad we have it. And I do want to take this opportunity to not only thank Mr. Castillo, but also Mr. Arreda, his team, the consultants, that, because we did apply a lot of pressure, and they did respond positively to it. They understand the situation that we were in. And we needed to recover these funds sooner rather than later. So as you can see, in less than a year, we were able to recover $5 million. We still have 2.8 to go. And I know we're going to be as persistent as we have been with Mr. Felix until that balance is zero. So we'll continue to make sure that we make progress on this.
Excellent.
So I'm glad you mentioned the support from the Water Works Department. I think, you know, without their support, without their guidance, we wouldn't be where we are right now. So all of the staff members in Water Works and also the engineering team were helping us out with this.
Teamwork. Well, this is huge for the city. Thank you for the report, and to the whole team, thank you for doing this, for recovering that money.
Thank you. If there is no more questions?
Any other questions? Nope, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Good news. 19. Introductory ordinance of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, changing the zoning district from R1 first one-family dwelling district to B3 general business district for property legally defined as lots 2 and 3 in Block 1 of Enchanted Ridge subdivision Unit 5, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, thank you. So we have another rezone item. This is for applicant and property owner Omero Morales Jr. at subject address 2435 and 2467 North Veterans Boulevard. They're seeking to rezone a parcel from R1 first one-family dwelling district to B3 general business district. This is along Veterans Boulevard, so it's a reasonable request. All those areas are typically business district. Either B1 or B3 is what they're requesting here. It's currently R1. I think a lot of times when things are originally platted or originally incorporated, if they're not designated a specific zone, then the default is R1. And that's what I believe is the only reason why this area would have been an R1 to begin with. So they're basically just trying to make it the appropriate zoning type for what Veterans Boulevard should be.
What did you say? It was, you thought it was an R1? Why?
The default, when areas are incorporated by the city, and if they're not specifically designated as something, then by default, it's R1. And so that may be why it was set this way.
Does that make any sense?
So their purpose, if granting the rezone to B3 where business uses could be done, they would expand on the Eden Learning Center, which is one of those businesses that already exists in this plaza. And you can see some renderings of what they're hoping to do. After getting the rezone, here's a vacant lot, or lots in question. You could see the lower right zoning map, it's in that lighter yellow color, which is R1. Again, it really wouldn't make sense for it to be R1. So this is a good change, I think, to make it the more appropriate zoning for Veterans Boulevard. We had, we had brought this, went through Planning and Zoning Commission in January. And we're bringing it back here to continue the process to finalize this rezone. Again, our recommendation is to grant it. It is the appropriate zoning, I believe, for this area. Any questions?
I mean, it makes sense, right, like you say? So I don't have any questions. Is counsel?
No, I understand the zoning request. The only thing that I'm looking at, as I'm looking at the rendering, is it like-
Is it what?
Like prefab buildings that they're putting in there? Or are they actually building those buildings? I mean, like from the rendering, it almost looks like a mobile home. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I know we're not addressing that, but I mean, it's just out of curiosity. I mean, I would just like to make sure that it is built in.
Yeah.
Permanent, it looks like those modular buildings, right? Those, I wanted to make sure that it's somewhat that's similar to what should, you know, what we're expecting along that area, you know?
That's a good catch. Um, we currently don't. Some people ask that. A lot of times, the out-of-town builders do ask, do you have certain material regulations, facade? Our current ordinances don't have that. So so metal buildings are currently allowed. It is something some cities do have, and so I think that's why we get that question a lot.
I think that's a valid point, and we should look into it, at least in major areas like that, like veterans, for aesthetic purposes and just to make everything look nice.
I mean, that way, we also, you know, I mean, how we started limiting certain type of businesses on veterans. And, um, I mean, I I just think it needs to be further developed in that area. That way, we, you know, we maintain the integrity of the thoroughfare.
If I'm not mistaken, I think UMC has a building like that in the back, right? United Medical Center, something similar to that?
Correct. Yeah, it's, I don't think it's up along on the frontage. I don't know that you could see it.
It's towards the back as well.
Well, those are good points for the corridor to have a certain.
The wickel, yes.
But we we can research that and look to bring that to council at a future meeting for potentially establishing that. Any other comments?
Your recommendation is to grant the zoning change.
Correct.
Do we have a motion to that effect? I'll make a motion to grant.
I don't, I don't, I agree. I don't have a problem with that. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Davis.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution appointing alternate members to the zoning board of adjustments and appeals of the City of Eagle Pass. Who is, are we all missing members to appoint or?
Currently, the board has two alternate members, and I believe they're wanting to appoint four members, four alternate members.
So just changing the the number of alternate members to increase at that time. So I guess, Placy, do you want to explain maybe some of the issues?
Yeah, so we had had two alternates for some time. Ordinance, um, Mrs. Garcia pointed out ordinance can allow to four. So we're bringing that back to to see if if counsel would like to appoint a couple of more. Right now, we have Crawford Rhodes as one alternate, and it would help if we had at least one or maybe a couple more alternates.
Okay. Does anyone have any recommendations on someone that they would like?
Can you tell me who we have on there right now?
A point.
The alternate?
No, I mean, everyone in general.
We have some new, so, um, Noah Rodriguez Falcon, Towie Valero, um, Ernesto Fuentes, Priscilla Chacon. And and George Antunez is also a new member. Yeah, we haven't actually even met with with several of these, so I'm just trying to jog my memory of who's on there. But those are the five.
Those are the five. Obviously, you need three, and the alternate is is Crawford.
Correct. And and a lot of the items on for zoning board require supermajority, so they'd need at least four for approval. So it is important that we try to always have five, honestly, for those meetings.
Okay.
So right now, we're asking for the resolution to approve adding or men or alter alternate?
Just to, if they have names to appoint, because it's already an established.
This is appointing other alternate members. I do not have anyone that I can think of, but.
I can give you another alternate. Mirna Almaguer.
Said Mirna Almaguer? Okay. Does anyone else have any recommendations?
Enrique Montalvo.
Okay, there we go. Okay, we have two two recommendations. Mirna Almaguer and Enrique Montalvo. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Sorry, Mr. Montalvo is on the civil service board, and they can observe on both, on both.
Ah, there we go.
In case you have anyone else that you would like to appoint at this time.
Adolfo Olivares.
Did I get it, sir?
Adolfo.
Adolfo Olivares.
Olivares. Okay. Okay, the the alternate would be Adolfo Olivares instead of Enrique Enrique Montalvo. Do we have a motion to approve these these two people to the zoning board of adjustment and appeals?
Motion.
You have a motion to approve by Councilman Garcia?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Twenty-one. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution appointing members of the Ethics Review Commission of the City of Eagle Pass.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Just to remind you, we had discussed the appoint. We we asked for you all to come back with to this meeting with names for members for the Ethics Commission. Everybody would have to appoint one member. Um, the only requirement at this time is that they live within the city limits, and they are not elected an elected official to any other body and not a city employee.
Okay. Do we have members? Just, okay, we want to start with Mr. Davis?
Eric Villasenor.
Ana Laura Castillo.
Jose Aranda.
The people that I asked, they they were gonna think about it, so I don't have one yet. So then the next mayor will get to appoint somebody.
Edward Graff.
You still have a quorum, right? Counselor?
And, yes, yes.
Edward Graff. Perfect. Good people. Do we have a a motion to approve these people to the Ethics Board?
So.
We do, by Mayor Protem Davis.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Someone's gonna contact them from the city?
Yes. Thank you.
We did twenty-two. Moving on to twenty-three. Confirmation by City Council of Civil Service Commission appointee Ms. Brenda Hoffman per Texas Local Government Code, Chapter one forty-three, Section one forty-three point zero zero six B. Do we have a a motion to confirm Ms. Brenda Hoffman?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to confirm her by Mayor Protem Davis.
Second.
Second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Twenty-four. Consideration and possible awarding slash rejection of RFP twenty-two-five dash zero zero one, leasing of copiers and printers.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon. Welcome, sir.
I'm a little less nervous than I was last month.
No, no, you did great. You did great, man.
So this is a consideration for possible awarding rejection for RFP twenty-two-five dash zero zero one, leasing of copiers and printers. Um, attached, it's the final tabulation. Uh, we did have an opportunity to interview the top three of the companies. And the, what the panel is recommending is, you know, awarding Rico with this RFP twenty-two-five dash zero zero one. Is there any questions?
Okay. And Rico came with good recommendations?
Correct. And they also scored the highest with when our panel members graded it. And they are currently our our service provider.
Okay, excellent.
They're currently the incumbent.
All right. I was not familiar with them, so that was gonna be my question. We work with them. You're happy with that company?
That is correct, sir. And and I think part of the process in in being able to go out and and request bids also makes the their renewal of their contract makes it more competitive. So obviously, they know we go out there. So we were able to crunch some of the numbers a little bit better to 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 give savings to the city. So not only is is their service acceptable, but we were able to squeeze some savings out just going through this process. We intend to do this with all city services from time to time.
And they carry good equipment.
Yes.
Excellent. So we we have a recommendation to go with Rico USA. Uh, does counsel have any questions, concerns, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation by Councilman Diaz.
I second it.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Twenty-five. Consideration and possible warning slash rejection for RFP twenty-two-five dash zero zero one nine, Sound Production and Music Services, Fourth of July event. Hello. I know that there was some legal issues, right?
That is correct, sir.
That we had to discuss. I do have a couple of legal matters, legal questions for item twenty-five. If anyone would.
Motion to take to executive?
We have a motion to take this into executive session by Councilman Garcia.
I second it.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Twenty-five will be discussed in executive session pursuant to five-five-one point zero seven one. Discussion with legal counsel. Twenty-six. Consideration and possible approval of the selection of a name for the City of Eagle Pass Hike and Bike Trail.
So mayor and council, as y'all are aware, the Hike and Bike Trail is nearing completion. And we bring to mayor and council this item because we would like to officially name the trail. Um, currently, it's just known as City of Eagle Pass Hike and Bike Trail. Um, but we we wanna, I don't know if that's what mayor and council wishes to keep it as or if we want to add any particular name. I know, and Mr. Gutierrez, if you can come up to the mic, I believe there's some monarch displays that we'll be having. Uh, I believe the city and maybe Ms. Ivey can also explain. Uh, I believe we're trying to become considered a monarch butterfly community. So I don't know if 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 we would like to incorporate that into the name or or not. But ultimately, I guess mayor and council have the ultimate say in what what the naming will be. But you want to explain that, Ricky?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, so Mr. Barra, this is, as part of the the trail itself is grant funded by Texas Parks and Wildlife. And part of the application had to do a lot with the natural scenery that was there in the, it was in the canal. So it's actually one of the areas and landing spots for monarch butterflies that pass through there. Um, so we did dedicate one section of the trail. It's gonna have a monarch butterfly station there and actual some scene as well in the shape of monarch butterflies and some information signage. So because it was a neat feature, it unique to that area, and it had to do a lot with the grant funding that we received from Texas Parks and Wildlife. And I know it is we're working on the designating the City of Eagle Pass as a monarch city.
Yes, we've been, we've been working together to make it a monarch city. So basically, it's it's a website for, you know, butterfly lovers, and you become a member, and there's signage. And so people who, you know, like those that follow birds, follow butterflies. So so they know that we have a location for them, and so we'll be a monarch city. Basically, it's it's what it's called. And I know through the grant, we, you know, we mentioned that we do, you know, experience that that here in the community. So we thought it might be helpful to include that in the title if if at all possible.
Okay, include something with the monarch, monarch, okay. Interesting. I didn't know that fact about butterflies. I like it.
We'll start with the migration route of the monarch butterfly in case we were doing.
So I don't know if anybody has any suggestions that you would like for us to consider. I know we're getting the the kiosk signage done, so we we would like to have the official name. But if not, I mean, we can always stick to what we have now when mayor and council decide to change it. I mean, it's really up to you guys.
We're not putting your name on it.
That would be a good, good suggestions for it. I'd be honored.
So I actually did have an idea for consideration that I don't know if we maybe can merge the two ideas or kind of play around with it. Um, but I, my suggestion was going to be the Cynthia El Muniz Hike and Bike Trail. Um, and that's, you know, I really wanted to to honor her in in life with with as someone that was a pillar in our community. Uh, unfortunately, we we didn't get around to that. But I I don't know if that's something that we can incorporate. Maybe merge those two ideas together.
Absolutely. I don't know if any of you. I think that's a a great idea. I mean, that was a a person that did a lot for the community. If we could merge those two, if counsel has opinions.
No, I I like it. Well, so let's make a motion to merge the two. They gave us ideas and bring it back or or what? Do we have time for that?
So I I did task our directors to throw some ideas out here for you guys. And of course, monarch was because of the feature that we'll be having, you know, Monarch Crossing, Monarch Way Trail, Cactus Bloom Trail. That one doesn't have monarch, but it's another suggestion. Eagle Heritage Trail. Those were some of the ones that we got. Eagle Trail, Monarch Path Trail, Monarch Crossing Trail, West Lake Scenic Trail. It is located in West Lakes, West Lakes Community Scenic Route. So those are just some options that our directors kind of threw out there just to kind of give you suggestions. But I mean, this is what.
Because where else is the the projected? Because remember, I know it's part of our Parks Master Plan to have the connectivity with the hike and bike trails. I mean, where else is it? I mean, where are we in the process of the other definition?
So ultimately, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor Protem, uh, this will be a part of a bigger network of trail. And the plan is, right now, we're working on another grand opportunity that will allow us to connect the current, the current spot there alongside Patsy Wind Boulevard. That's that's should be beginning construction at the end of the year. Um, and with that, we would connect from El Indio Highway. We would have a a a trail from there all the way out here to Main Street connecting to this one. So ultimately, then we wanted to continue from there to cross Main Street and to go through that neighborhood that's there along the canal and ultimately have a major network of trail that can connect from one side of the city to the other. So it it is, I'm glad that you mentioned that because it is one piece that hopefully at some point will connect from one side of the city to the other.
How would the the designation of the monarch fit into that equation of like for grant funding all the way through? I mean, is it, is it that important? Or is it okay just to have certain areas be the monarch trail? I mean, what I'm trying to do is, because I know we have two different ideas, and I know one thing is to merge them. But I mean, not to take it away from the individual that I that I believe merits the recognition, not just because you're here. I I hope hardly feel that way.
Yeah.
But, um, I mean, but I mean, if we can merge it, that's fine. I mean, if it's for, I mean, it's still, I think it's, it just sounds nice if you put them all together. It's a Muniz Monarch Trail.
Yep.
You know what I mean? It's just, the name lends itself to it, you know?
I think in this particular case, because of that feature, you know, we were kind of focusing on the monarch part. But, you know, it is gonna be a part of a bigger trail. So I'm 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 sure there's gonna be some butterflies along the trail, you know, a- as it continues to grow. But ultimately, you know, we're we're ready to name it whatever mayor and council feels is the best.
I like what you just said. I mean, the Cynthia El Muniz Monarch Monarch Trail, City of Eagle Pass.
And remove the hike and bike. That would sound so long.
Yes, it would just be trail.
Yeah, let's do that.
Monarch Trail.
Monarch Trail, yes, just leave Monarch Trail.
I mean, I would like to make a motion to, yeah, I mean, I don't want to take away from.
No, no, go for it.
Sorry. I mean, as you were saying, that's what I thought. I mean, I just, you know, a beautiful person, and I mean, just just like butterflies, you know?
This is a, by the way, this is turning out to be a pretty amazing, beautiful.
You're gonna make me cry too.
It's turning out to be a pretty amazing, beautiful project. Everyone in the city has had a hand in this project. Uh, I don't want to, I I was gonna, I see some people here, and I was gonna start naming. But it's been every department, from finance to everyone, to public works, to parks. Yes.
The trees are a very nice touch.
Yes. It'll be something that that the community is gonna enjoy from now to forever.
And I'd just like to recommend, I mean, since we are also adding the monarch, is just to add vegetation that naturally encourages, you know, the the migration of the monarch to stay in that area. So I think it would, it would be nice that way during that time of the year. I mean, we would see a, you know, plentiful number of monarchs and stuff like that.
Absolutely, sir.
So with that in mind, I'd like to make the motion to formally name it the Cynthia El Muniz Monarch Trail.
Okay, we 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 have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Davis to name the Hike and Bike Trail, the Cynthia El Muniz Monarch Trail. And we have a second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion. All in favor?
A big yes.
Great ideas by everyone. Thank you all so much.
And just to those watching, um, it's scheduled for ribbon cutting to open it officially to the public Monday, June sixteenth. Uh, we hope that the community can go out and experience this ribbon cutting and ultimately enjoy it. And it's for the community, and we want them to enjoy it. And congratulations. I think it couldn't be named a better name. So congratulations, Ms. Garcia.
We'll wait for, we'll see the public there on the sixteen.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
What a beautiful surprise.
I can see they am with the wings of the monarch. My former teaching days of marketing started to come back, and I'm sorry. But yeah, I mean, I was, I didn't expect, I guess I didn't see that item on the agenda. So thank you, Elias, for bringing that up. Because I think it is very befitting. She touched a lot of lives and impacted our community in a lot of very positive ways, not only on the school board and her profession and, you know, her family and stuff, so.
Good, good stuff.
Those are the people that deserve the recognition.
Yes, sir. Twenty-seven. Executive session pursuant to Section five-five-one point zero eight seven, Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Discuss Economic Development Amendment Regarding Chapter three-eighty Agreement with Eagle Hospitality Group and Possible Action in Open Session. Twenty-eight. Executive session pursuant to Section five-five-one point zero eight seven, Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, Presentation on Project Blue Jay and Discussion in Regard to a Chapter three-eighty Agreement Between the City of Eagle Pass and Private Investor and Possible Action in Open Session Regarding Same. Twenty-nine. Executive session pursuant to Section five-five-one point zero seven one of Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, Consultation with Attorney Regarding the Selection of Outside Legal Counsel to Proceed with Legal Action Against Just One Management, LLC. And we are also taking, which what item was it that we were?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five into executive session pursuant to 551.071, Consultation with our attorney, going into executive session at 6:44 PM. Starting with item twenty-five, consideration and possible awarding/rejection for RFP number 2025-0019, Sound Production and Music Services, Fourth of July event. We did have a discussion in executive session regarding the Fourth of July celebrations and what the city is going to do for that celebration, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion from anyone from counsel.
I'd like to make a motion to proceed as directed in executive session.
And, well, we had spoken that we needed first reject the.
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion to reject the bids.
The RFP.
All bids for the RFP.
Okay. And proceed as.
And proceed as directed in executive session.
We have a motion by Councilman Diaz.
Okay.
Second by Councilman Garcia. Discussion. And just here, discussion section, we'll just let the public know that the plan is to have a big Fourth of July celebration where all the community is going to be invited to Main Street. Sort of like a Fourth of July on Main. Vendors will have the opportunity to set up on Main Street. There will be fireworks, a firework show as well, and also live music on Main Street. Am I correct?
That is correct, mayor.
All right.
Similar, I want to say similar, like kind of how they do San Antonio, like the Fiesta Week, you know, around the Margarita area restaurants, that they have all the little booths and.
Yes, sir.
And live music, so it'll be nice. It'll be nice.
Perfect. Anyone else? Anybody wants to add? Discussion?
No, sir. We'll make sure we plan it accordingly and that we give the community a great event to attend, and the firework shows should be bigger and better this year. HEB was kind enough to donate $25,000 for that show, so we'll make sure that anybody that goes out enjoys themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Valdés, and we do want to thank, like you just said, HEB. HEB always comes through for the community. HEB always donates money for our firework show, so we thank them for everything that they do for the City of Eagle Pass. With that said, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
I have some ideas, but you know what? I'll just share it with you later. As we're talking here, some ideas came from the, I don't know, after you get out. This will be the third. Throw it out.
Okay, sir. Thank you. We'll definitely take those ideas.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis has some great ideas today.
No, it'll be a secret. I'll share it with you all, but it'll be a secret to our community.
All right. Okay. Twenty-seven. Executive session pursuant to Section 551.087, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Discuss Economic Development Amendment Regarding Chapter 380 Agreement with Eagle Hospitality Group and Possible Action in Open Session. This is the item in regards to the hotel downtown that we discussed.
Oh, yes. Motion to, oh, wait.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, motion to go ahead and extend.
The agreement?
The agreement, as agreed upon.
Okay, we have a motion to extend the agreement by Councilman Garcia?
I second it.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Twenty-eight. Executive session pursuant to Section 551.087, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Presentation on Project Blue Jay and Discussion in Regard to a Chapter 380 Agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and Private Investor and Possible Action in Open Session Regarding Same. We discussed this, this is the new business.
Correct, sir.
That's coming.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Chapter 380 incentives by Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Twenty-nine. Executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Consultation with Attorney Regarding the Selection of Outside Legal Counsel to Proceed with Legal Action Against Just One Management, LLC.
Motion to look into the two choices that were presented to city attorney.
Okay.
And present in next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Councilman Garcia?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We do, by Councilman Diaz. Second.
I second.
Councilwoman Ramon. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Meeting adjourned, 7:39 PM. Thank you.